All right, it's a little after five o'clock. We'll call our, call order, our commission court. And we want to welcome everyone. Thank you all for coming. At this time, we have a roll call. Ms. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Owens?
Here.
Mr. Hendricks?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
We do have a court. We stand and pledge with the flag and will appeal to the ladies and prayers.
Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, and heaven, again, we thank you for the opportunity to come together. Or we thank you, God, for your blessing, your love and your grace. So we know that, that we depend on you daily. And as we go on to meetings tonight, dear Lord, we pray that if anything comes to you tonight, will be pleasing to you in Christ now and pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's see, we have Ms. Robby Mobley with Harts. And everybody here should be pretty familiar with Harts in our county. Been pretty active for over twenty, twenty years in their work here. And Ms. Mobley is coming to speak about concern because there are other nonprofit agencies that help Cleveland County and they also get funding from the state. But I'm going to let Ms. Mobley come and speak to you.
Thank you, Judge. And thank you all for allowing me to speak. My mission tonight is, is to help. I did have a prepared statement because I get really emotional about this issue. We have a lot of hurting people here in the county that need help. And there are other avenues besides Harts that can help them. And as the judge said, there's another nonprofit out there that I, we need your help encouraging them to support our residents. My mission, like I say, is twofold. First, on behalf of the Harts Board of Directors, I would like to extend our sincerest gratitude for the ongoing monthly financial support the commission provides and sharing with you how these donations have not only helped to care for the less fortunate residents, but have also brought new scope of the programs offered by Harts. Secondly, we would like to ask for your involvement in further stretching the funding that is entrusted to us by sharing other funds that are currently allocated for Cleveland County are being spent assisting local residents. Earlier today, we shared with each of you via email, our new promotional video showing how far Harts has evolved over the past two decades, decades, from helping three families in need back in 2001 to providing services for over 500 households in 2021. Harts has become a pillar of support for struggling individuals in our community. Our primary focus is assisting the most vulnerable among us, such as the single parent families, individuals with disabilities, and seniors living on a fixed income. Over the years, our mission has remained the same, helping those with short-term needs reach long-term success. The past two years have been very challenging for Harts due to the pandemic, and we had to develop creative new ways of providing assistance directly to those in need. For example, our food distribution program has turned into a drive-through pickup service, allowing us to give out over 5,000 pounds of food on a monthly basis. Currently, more people are struggling and we are seeing residents asking for help. Thanks to donors like you all, we are able to meet life's three most important needs, food, clothing, and shelter. Your donations are making a difference. Through your generosity and the generosity of other donors, we're not able to continue our regular programs, but in the last year, we were able to start two new ones. Our Build a Bed Program, providing beds for children in need throughout the county, and also our Grandma's Heart, providing mentors for first-time moms. This year, we're going to start a bed program that's aimed at providing free groceries for our senior population. Harts is always looking for new ways to provide assistance. In the packets that I provided you, you'll find our 2021 annual report along with our last year newsletters. As you can see, without receiving federal funding, Harts has been blitzed. We received over $368,000 in donations, grants, and awards provided and provided almost $90,000 in direct client assistance. Our partnership with the Alabama World Coalition for the Homeless, we refer to that as HARTS, helped pay an additional $95,000 in emergency shelter and rental assistance. As you can see with the front showing our expense-to-income ratio, which shows you the breakdown of the donations and how to utilize, eighty-three cents of every dollar that comes in goes back out through one of our programs. We work hard to keep the overhead expenses low and the client assistance expenses high. One area of client assistance that has dramatically increased is requests for emergency financial help, specifically requests for help paying heating bills. As noted in the annual report, while it's still alone, Harts spent almost $35,000 helping residents. It's shown in the 2022 activity, I'm sorry, I missed it. $35,000 paying the power bills and purchase propane. Year to date in 2022, we've spent over $2,200 for propane bills. It's shown in the 2022 activity report at $8,000 in power bills, as shown in the paper report printed from the Alabama Power Corps. Secondly, and for discussion purposes, we wanted to mention the existence of another county entity capable of providing heating assistance. There is a federally funded agency, the Community Action Agency of Talladega Play, Ranoff, Calvary, and Clever. We refer to them as the CAATCRCC that receives low-income home energy assistance program, referred to as the LIHEP funding, provided through the Community Service Block Grant, the CSPG, administered by the Alabama Department of Economic and Community and the PERS. That's ADCA. I know that's a lot of acronyms, but basically, the funding is provided by the government to help low-income households pay energy bills. Each community action agency in the state is awarded funds based on specific criteria that is outlined by the AdCA State Office. Each county is allocated a percentage of that total grant award and money is dispersed through the local CAA offices. According to a CAATCRCC LIHEP coordinator, Cleveland County's allocation should be a percent of the total award. The local office is located on Main Street near in Hefflin and is staffed one day a week. According to their current Paris mail, the process for obtaining assistance is clients' must leave the message on Friday in hopes of obtaining an appointment the following week for assistance. If the client's not contacted by the following Tuesday, they were not selected and will not receive assistance at that time. Additionally, with the onset of COVID, CAA has started using the phone app. Clients can complete applications and provide needed documentation without having to go into the office. They can then finish the process with a call from a CAA service provider. By contrast, the Harts assistance process is for clients to reach out to the Hefflin CAA office first. And if CAA is unavailable or unable to help, clients may then be eligible for assistance from Harts. Over the last several months, our clients have expressed concern over being able to attain help from CAA. Among the complaints voiced, one, not being able to speak with a service provider directly; two, not receiving a return call; and three, not having someone in the local office to answer questions, has been very frustrating. Harts staff has tried to ease the burden, but we can't do it alone. We have helped clients upload the documentation, we've called Community Action on their behalf, and we have worked with board members, Community Action board members, to try and get the needed help, all to no avail. I personally served on the CAA Board of Directors for two years along with Judge Roberts. Trying to make a difference. My request for information regarding funding allocated versus funding spent in the county went unanswered, which is against their bylaws. According to the state, the 2021 LIHEP award for CAA TCRCC was $1.8 billion. Now, this is last year, with an additional prices allocation of $350,000 and the CSPG programmatic allocation of an additional $639,000. According to their guidelines, Cleveland County's allocation, allocated amount should have been almost a quarter of a million dollars. That's the eight percent that should be allocated for Cleveland County. We have requested on two separate occasions in writing, which is the way that they requested us to, us, of course, fine, for specifics for Cleveland County, and have not received any information from CAA TCRCC. I have resigned from this position to avoid any conflict of interest. Harts is providing thousands of dollars in assistance to local residents. We are supported only by individuals, churches, businesses, and organizations that believe in our mission. We see the financial need growing in our community, but cannot leave you so much on our own. We've cried with that single mother of two who's been seeking out of work, choosing to go with that insurance while insisting on paying part of the power bill. We've cried with that elderly lady that's living alone, choosing to go without medicine in order to pay for propane instead of oil. The need is real in our community. When asked, Community Action says that there's not a need in Cleveland County and they've reallocated Cleveland County funding to other counties. Our ask is simple. Please, do your own follow-up research, reach out to our local CAA office and Board of Directors and ask for specifics yourself, as commissioners. Tell them there is a need in Cleveland County and they need to do more to help our residents. Reach out to the AdCA State Office and let them know that we're not getting the support from the local office that we should. We've provided the numbers for you in your packet of the different people this week. Please help us at Harts stretch our funding by encouraging Community Action to spend the funds allocated for Cleveland in Cleveland. Thank you.
Would you explain then what LIHEP is? That LIHEP is an acronym that we're getting.
The low-income, low-income, low-income home energy assistance program. They have a heating season and a cooling season. Previously, prior to my arrival at Harts, the previous case manager service provider stated that she was spending about $15,000 a month on client assistance. Currently, the last report that I got from Community Action when I was on the board, Cleveland County had only spent like $6,800, and I can provide this recommendation to you. Cleveland County had only utilized about $6,800 of the amount that was allocated. Piedmont, okay, Cleveland County has 15,000 citizens. Piedmont has 48, 4900 citizens. They spent more money in Piedmont office by $2,000 than Cleveland County spent for hours with 15,000.
And you said, you said the office is, is it open one day a week in Hefflin?
One day a week in Hefflin, yes.
Is that going on before he says?
No, sir, it's right in, on Main Street right next to the Chinese restaurant. And it's only manned one day a week.
Fuckin' rough.
Yes, sir.
At one time, and you remember this, they shared an office there at the Hefflin office. We, that was what counted, you know, we paid for Harts utilities. And part of that is we allowed them to use that office. And I know it was tied to them, but they wanted to be separate, their leadership. And they, they are renting space and spending money renting space right there across the Chinese place. So actually, when I was on this board as chairman, someone cried foul within staff. We brought in an outside attorney to do an investigation. The board agreed to that. The attorney found some things that was a problem, but the board did not want to deal with it. I cased up my turn and I, you know, got out of that, that kind of the board, I just felt uncomfortable with it. I think you, you stayed on a while.
I did.
But it's almost seemed like the punishment toward Cleveland County that they do not want to serve our residents.
When we made the request, when they chose, looking at moving out of our office, the three board members that supposedly spoke for Cleveland County voted against it. We are the Cleveland County representatives and they did listen to us. So the board turned a blind eye not only on the report that the judge is mentioning, but there's another investigation that's going on internally on them currently. And, you know. We have asked time and again for support. I spent ten and a half years trying to get them to help the residents in Cleveland County. I can't tell you how many clients we've had come in saying that they can't find anybody, they're not helping them, they refuse to answer the phone calls, they're not making the office. So we have sent them to the Talladega, Main office to try and get assistance. We've done everything we know to do. We spoke to the chairman of the board of Community Action. He said, well, tell them to call me. So we did, and we put, you know, his information out there during one of our food distribution. We gave them a flyer with everyone's number on it. And they started making phone calls and he called and said, please take my name off that. You're the chairman, you said you wanted to hear from our constituents. The administration is telling you there's not a need in Cleveland County? I'm telling you there is, and we're trying to prove to you that there is need. People are hurting and they need help.
Anyway, the commission can send a letter and request the financials and also record, uh, recoy?
Request.
Request. That the director or whoever headed it is to come speak. We can request against you.
I spoke, I spoke several times. I said, I've got phone calls, I've probably got over a dozen phone calls from people that have not hit up, they're not returning, just like Kim said, they're not returning their calls.
If you keep.
She got very hostile with me at one point because I called her off of cell phone. And that's the number I had. And I said, well, do you have a problem? And they called me. And she, she wanted to know where I got my information. And I said, I've got people calling me because you're not helping our people. Then all of a sudden, her tone changed, you know, and she went, went through the list of the names of the people. And she not supposed to talk again this week, but they're not helping our people.
She actually lives in the county, she did live in the county, she still lives in the county?
I think so.
And she actually lives here in Cleveland.
She lives close to you, Mr. Hill, in your district?
She wasn't providing us with her financial aid.
Oh, okay. And Ms.?
It's supposed to be open for public.
Now, another ally we have still on the board is Ms. Heard, who's CEO. She's, she is an ally. She's, we're going to get.
We had a problem with this a couple of years ago too, when the, when the governor had issued for heat. And I had people out in the resident that weren't on giving service and I had to call them, called them several times. And then I got a call from my mom. And then they were, the people were able to go back and reapply, but there's nobody there helping them. They don't know, they think that they can fill this paperwork out and just send it online because it's not working that way.
They can go to Talladega directly, but that's a long haul.
It looked like app is, there's more to it than what several of our clients can do. And not the leaders have, they're going to help residents.
They, they tell, they tell me, well, it's probably because they didn't fill out the paperwork, because they don't know how to fill out the paperwork. Somebody needs to be helping. And these people don't know that they're not getting the paperwork filled out right.
We, we just need to get somebody to put their extended funds. I might share their accountable.
I wrote a letter on your behalf after that.
And she's very good at this.
She probably was a good lady.
So the list of things that they supply, is that on here? That they're supposed to furnish with citizens of Cleveland County? The list of things? Is it gas, electrical?
Gas, electrical. With the LIHEP funds, it's heating and cooling. With the CSPG, they're also able to provide mental assistance, they're able to provide...
Other utilities like water.
Other utilities like water and...
Did you have a program that, did you have a house?
They made it worse.
That can make sure that it is energy.
They provide energy assistance and there's several things that they provide, but our people's not getting it.
They just need to share us the finance where we got our quarter million dollars. If we didn't, then go up the chain.
Well, you said that, that AdCA is, has looked at, I mean, I guess if they look at that, of course, I think you could call our legislators too and maybe Mr. Price, Michelle and all, they'll be aware too.
What might go down or do we, go around to their place?
But it is, you know, just, just knowing that it is state money and this is money that, that a lot of folks, if they can, if it helps them with their electricity in the winter at least once or in the summer, then they, they have money that they can buy other things.
You have older people that literally, and I had this, I have a couple of them, that literally went without their medication. And, and then even I had one, one lady that was putting, this is how she managed, she would put $25 a month up in her savings account where she could buy that tank of gas. And guess what that cost her? It cost her to be, not be able to get exempt from garbage because she had that savings account to buy her gas. And that, that's what's frustrating is when the older people that we should be helping are not getting the help.
Well, I would propose a letter on your behalf and if y'all could all, maybe talk to Ms. Heard and any of her listeners, anybody.
Do we need to put some people on the board?
And that's what I asked.
There is a decision opened for the elected official. When Judge Robertson resigned or rolled off, she did not, she handiggs her board and she has not replaced that particular board member. She did not replace my seat until forced to by the state. And Rhonda can tell you who it was that she chose.
And Ms. Heard's not serving as elected official, she's serving as a business?
Low-income.
Low-income.
Can you make a recommendation to lose your office?
I mean, you can make recommendations. It goes back, when I first came in office twenty years, over twenty years ago, Calvin and Cleveland went together. Calvin, they got into trouble. Talladega absorbed, Talladega Clay and Ranoff were one, one group, and they absorbed Cleveland County. And so I've been on that board for a long time, but as chairman, you know, you begin to see things and there was some complaints and we, of course, it's going to change the leadership, change the leadership.
Those complaints you're talking about, it's these complaints, did they talk to the DA about her?
No, there was nothing that could, that could get to that point where the DA, there's just some, not, it's not really good practices, you know, that someone was pointing out. A lot of co-syndapism things are going on.
The problem is they're saying that our applicants, they're not filling out the applicants, right? That, that's reading the deny. And, but it's because they're not getting the help to fill out the application. So, you know, they're, they're using that as their tool to say.
The office, the office never opened.
They are only naming the office one day a week. They say that there's no need to do more than that because the need's not there in Cleveland County, so.
Well, well, again, I, I know we got, you got on your, in the stomach age, but how do you get on that board? I mean, if we got a note, then is this letting, appoints one of our, one of the elected officials per se?
They, they apply and then the board votes on them.
The way I was put on the board was Rhonda Green was resigning. And she just invited me to come to the dinner to sit in on the, on the meeting that night. And she recommended me to the board. And Ms. Keith had no chance of denying that the board just approved me and moved me right into her seat.
When the vote over remaining?
If Ms. Heard could possibly.
Nominate somebody that was sitting in the crowd, they might get a...
And we will not know.
And it's possible, Kate Jackson used to be on his admission, but he got asked to be on.
You'd be very welcome. And, and in an effort to be completely transparent here, we do, I have hired a previous employee from Community Action. Her name is Kelly Cobb. But she's working on our, we received an ABC trust grant and she's working on that because she's familiar with the processes and is through Alabama Power. But she had resigned from there and, you know, was looking for someone with our day rate entry. And she applied and, you know, we hired her. So we do have the previous Community Action, which may be why she's asking to have me in the office. I'm just going to throw that out there. And also Julie Borelli, who is running for the district seat, is the former CFO for Community Action. So she might need someone, if you want any more information on the insights as far as financials. And, I mean, she is the financial officer for the city of Aniston and has recently came along and showed, she's got a little more insight into the potential there and possibilities.
Any voice? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, moving on, there are no other comments from official board members. Lane, you don't have anything in the chair's office, do you? No one works presentations or publicly, can sit agenda? There's really, there's some vacancies and I guess it'd be just a minute to be voting on. Entertaining motion to?
Make a motion there.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Rhonda, I have to get something, we need business.
Yes, sir.
I got a resolution out there. I'm going to go and call and board you.
Okay. Mr. Hendricks is making a motion to add something to the agenda and it reads, whereas Article II, Section P of the county's personal policies and procedures manual provides for periodic performance appraisals of employees, and whereas the commission desires to conduct a mid-year appraisal of its board director, reporting employees, administrator, EMA director, engineer, and human resource director, and whereas the commission wishes to establish an ad hoc committee of two commissioners to conduct said evaluations with advice and assistance of any expert or consultant necessary. Now therefore, the county, the Cleveland County Commission establishes an ad hoc performance appraisal committee comprised of Commissioner Blank and Commissioner Blunt to conduct said appraisals. He's asking to add this to the agenda. Do we have a second?
No, second.
We have a second. I just, Cobb, any questions or discussion? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That'll be Jay. Okay, we need business. I just want to tell you all, no mistake, that if you want to leave, it is okay. Okay? Just want you to do it. I actually traced it here. I just want you, it's going to be a long meeting, so y'all, y'all can slip out anytime. Just don't, it's all right. Don't feel bad. We won't shame you if you leave. A mint resolution 5207, whereas Cleveland County Commission has previously adopted Resolution Number 5207 accepting commentary of such its pay study plan C, whereas clarification of two points is needed in regard to the resolution. Whereas Resolution Number 5207 states that the salary increase will take effect in the pay period starting April 1st, 2022, the resolution should read that the salary increase will take effect in the pay period for the first paycheck in April 2022. Whereas Resolution 5207 would not clearly state that it was the intent of the county commission that there will be no changes to job titles or job description. Therefore, be resolved that the Cleveland County Commission hereby adopt these amendments to Resolution 5207. We have the motion, Mr. Hendricks, second. Ms. Cobb, any discussion?
I would like to, I mean, where it says salary increases, it should say, it should say adjustments or job equivalent adjustments, because it's really not favorable. We're just, the whole study was to bring our jobs in line with equivalent jobs in the community.
Surrounding areas.
Yes.
Where, where you, which, which paragraph is that?
Third paragraph, it says the salary increases in two different places there. I, I just don't think that's appropriate word.
Word. So you'd like to amend it, which, in what way?
Just do, uh.
Adjustment.
Salary adjustment.
Job evaluations or something, I mean, we really don't do the pay.
I would, we're not doing the jobs, but I wouldn't necessarily fix evaluations there, since this is just on the salary adjustments would be an appropriate replacement for increase.
Okay, so we're, both words, increase the adjustment?
Yes, sir.
In both places in that same area?
Yes, sir.
So that's the amendment? Do you, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
Everybody understand or I need to read again or not good?
Hmm.
Any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, whereas Cleveland County, Cleveland County Commission has passed resolution fifty-two oh seven in its amendment, which concerned employee pay increases, uh, whereas the budget for each department's salaries and wages, retirement, contribution, employer taxes, and work with compensation are affected by the change, therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to increase the budget for each of these line items to account for these changes.
Not the motion.
As Kyle makes a motion.
I'll go.
Mr. Hendricks, second. Any discussion?
You want to change that as a pay increase, a salary adjustment?
I'm making a really fancy right there. What I was gonna say was, I would like to see the minimum budget as soon as we get it, to see the money changes.
I agree on that. Um, the, the complications of dividing everything up by department because employees, some employees don't get just paid out of one budget.
Yeah.
It's, it's spread between departments, that's, that's what I'm thinking of.
But you gotta have it all done by the end of the month, hope we got to.
That's right.
So we're good?
So, how many?
Go ahead.
So how many, uh, salaries are you having to deal with, one or two, that comes out to different budgets? Is there more than one?
Well, when you think about how nine-one-one and EMA work together, those are different. Even, even with the administrative here, those are, those are affected, they affect several budgets.
Okay, but is, I, what I'm saying is, is.
It's not every pay.
What I'm saying is, if this one employee is staying in two different budgets, but is the employee still making the same amount per hour, it's just a bind up, so it's just a, it's just a number in the middle, and is that?
Right, and if you want to actually see how it affects each budget.
Oh, you're talking about, or that's, both, okay, I see.
And it's not, it's not just salaries, there's line items for salaries, there's line items for how it affects, like, there's social security and Medicare, there's line item for retirement, uh, for, uh, leave approval, I mean, it affects a number of line items on each budget. So it's a little bit complicated, and I'm not giving a excuse, but I haven't worked on financials and tried to get that done this due this month, so that's probably been tied up in.
Okay.
I'll work on it.
So, uh, we're reading all of this, we're spoken, any other questions? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Ms. Kyle, you said aye, right?
Yes.
New business item D, whereas Cleveland County Commission previously passed resolution fifty-two zero one for the use of ARPA funding on water projects, whereas the legislature has decided to follow rule of ARPA funds uses that has in turn made the funds available for more types of uses and streamline the administrative approval process, therefore be resolved that the Cleveland County Commission sends resolution fifty-two zero one.
Second.
Mr. Hendricks, and a second, or Ms. Kyle, any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. New, uh, business item D, whereas Cleveland County has received American Rescue Plan Act Physical Recovery Funds, ARPA funds, and is charged with ensuring that such funds are administered in accordance with the state that are law, whereas under the final rule published by the United States Department of Treasury, dated January sixth, two thousand twenty-two, the county has the option to elect a standard allowance of up to, so is that ten million dollars to categorize as revenue replacement funds, or for calculation of revenue loss as provided in the final rule? And whereas the final rule provides that the election is a one-time irrevocable election that must be made for the period of performance that ARPA funds award, and whereas the election must be made in the county's next project and expenditure report, which is due on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, and whereas the Cleveland County Commission has determined that it would be appropriate to delegate the determination election to its chairman, now therefore being resolved by the commission as follows, the chair and the commission is hereby authorized to make a determination as to whether or not to utilize the standard allowance for the purpose of calculating revenue loss for the county in January, the county's authorized reporting representative for ARPA funds to make a corresponding election in conjunction with the final of the county's ARPA projects and expenditure report on or before April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
I'm making my motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Hendricks, and Ms. Kyle, and so, and of course, in doing this, I understand that I respect y'all's wishes, this commission is open.
I, I got a question. Why don't we work it like that, where it says we're authorizing you to make a determination? Why, why are we not making a determination then? I, I.
This is the resolution that they actually say, the resolution that now they actually have this, this is it, or for me, I actually have a copy for Ron's, and I think they're just asking for representation of the commission as on the resolution.
Well, I have a problem with that, and I have a problem, it says authorized to make a determination.
Yeah.
Let's give it, then power to do whatever you want.
Yeah. Want to?
You can amend that.
Mr. Hendricks, we can insert a sentence there, that says something to the.
Cause I'm just getting a pickleball.
That Kool-Aid.
Yeah.
I would suggest, in the first line of the last paragraph, where it says, make a determination, that you strike those three words and replace them with convey the commission's desire. So change it to the chair and the commission is hereby authorized to convey the commission's desire as to whether or not to utilize the standard allowance.
Do we need a resolution to state it or?
I don't know what your desire is.
Well, I thought you said, do we need a resolution statement?
You would need to either do it by resolution or just convey it eventually to the chair. It's time that you, you would do a resolution and help me project, right?
Project.
So it's project, you would, all you're saying is, is time will be signed, it would be the important person, but once the commission makes a sign, he would be evil.
I told y'all, I didn't lobby for this.
I'm glad.
Um, is you, you gonna make that amendment?
Yeah.
You will, oh.
I did, but. I would also like a, a resolution before we actually vote, I click on the record.
Well, that's what we do, that's what we do when we change, when we change this wording, that's what we do, we're voting to change the wording, correct? Well, this, this decision is about whether to elect a standard allowance or perform calculations of revenue losses about it, which way do you want to go, which way do you want to tell the chairman to report.
See, originally you had to do calculations to prove if you had revenue loss, but now it's not that, you don't have to do it anymore, that's the part, I think you better change it, keep it on it. I think that that's all it's going to say is.
I know that's what it's saying, but, but, we're not gonna be taking amendments for on record saying that the, that the commission voted to do it, I guess it's mine.
I think, I think you would, wouldn't you? You could do a resolution to say, no, he's what the actual project gives, I think so.
No, I'm just saying.
Make your decision.
We're, you know, we're making the decision to move this two point eight million dollars over to this revenue replacement. It's, it's a resolution I would like, I, this right here, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but you don't need to say we're doing it, it's just.
It's with options.
Could we take this to, to the end of the meeting, and then add another resolution, vote that we, one or the other, and then come back to this?
So entertain motion down, table this, and we can add motion, add another resolution.
I'd like to move item D to, yeah, I don't, whatever, we change it or whatever.
We got that.
All right, you good with the table?
Yeah.
You can just come back to it as D.
Okay, okay.
And then, but then I would like to add a resolution.
Okay.
That we vote on which of the two options.
Do you want to wait till the end?
Yeah, we're waiting. Just we keep it off, right?
So we're gonna move on, we're gonna, if everybody's okay with that, we're moving on to new business item D. Whereas the Association of County Commission, and the Cleveland County Commission previously entered into a maintenance and support membership agreement for the administration planning, management, and completion support in the areas of educational, intergovernmental compliance, and technical assistance related to the use of funds received by the county from the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one, via and through the associations investing in Alabama County's IAC program. And whereas, to ensure that all participating counties share an equitable portion of the costs to support the IAC program and to allow for the best delivery of services, the IAC Operation Council recommends to the Association Board for Actors that it establish a minimum fee for all participating counties. Whereas on November the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, the Association Board for Actors approved the recommendation by the IAC Operation Council to establish a minimum fee of three percent of the American Rescue Plan Act Physical Recovery Funds received by the county. Now therefore be resolved by the commission that the association and the county hereby enter to this agreement to the maintenance and support membership agreement. Paragraph three of the agreement shall be deleted in its entirety in place of the following. Uh, in maintenance and support of the associations investing in Alabama County's funds, the county hereby agrees that it will appropriate to the association a flat fee of six percent on the first seven million funds to be received, and four percent on any funds received in excess of seventy million, including funds designated as revenue loss as defined by treasury. The treasury entered in final ruling, no case however, shall the fee be less than three percent of the total funds received by the county, regardless of the amount of funding designated as a revenue replacement fund. I'm making my motion. Mr. Hendricks makes the motion. And a second, Ms. Kyle, you make the second. Go ahead, sir.
I mean, it's my understanding, it says something about twenty-seven thousand dollars, is that right?
I don't know, probably something, eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
So, that wasn't eighty thousand.
Okay.
It's gonna say it's that much, but just to change it, and just do the revenue replacement.
I did say it's a month, I was not sure.
Okay, any other discussion or question? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Come on, Ms. Kyle, you gotta be loud.
I know.
I know, but you gotta be loud.
I'm tired of this.
I mean, whereas Cleveland County Commission has rescinded resolution fifty-two zero one for using ARPA funding for the water project, and has accepted a resolution to designate the funds as revenue replacement, whereas the county commission still desires to use ARPA funding for water projects in the amount of seven hundred thousand, therefore be resolved that the Cleveland County Commission agrees to apply for approval from the IAC for projects for revenue replacement and not to exceed seven hundred thousand that was received through ARPA funding.
I'm making my motion.
Second.
Does anyone want to take this and bring Mike in to the workstation, because it's gonna take, it's gonna take more than seven hundred thousand, or we might cut some projects out, I mean, I mean, the figures he came up with is more than seven hundred thousand, and I don't think it's gonna change the situation.
Who did, and if you don't want to be saying, I remember the whole discussion about that, and he actually had provided that list of kind of like his top, was supposed to be done.
I got it.
He knew that it was too much, but, you know, seven hundred thousand, you guys came up with that as a figure, because, you know, you get that option in here, so that was kind of bringing that with it, and the second page of that, it shows, you know, if the funds get this far, the last few are sort of like, you know, a per review about what you want. But, yeah.
How far along were we on this, I mean, I know we kept this fingers, but, but it's my understanding that we had to, to actually do this like a grant process, with work on the business for a grant, or applying for a grant, how far along are we on that?
That he is in the part of the process right now, working with the engineer to get the technical work, that, the actual specifications that they need, or.
And the seven hundred dollars.
Yes, and that's in a hundred thousand dollar circle. He is working with, with the engineer right now, that has, has worked its projects and drawn up the details that they'll need to actually, I, I say for the, for the amount.
Okay, hey, he's got, I, so he, he knows what they need.
Yes, yeah, he, he's already followed a little something out. Doesn't he, if you come back and ask for the water projects, they'll go, what they're running now, um, is, they have, the generator is a big issue, and I'm like, hasn't spoken to us about that yet, but, um, if the, and you can apply to the commission, I'm a little bit of, they lose power.
Yeah.
They have a major problem, they should water it, uh, he, he's had a lot of wires probably.
Yeah, the last one's really bad, and they can actually rent the generator and bring it out there, and then, we're calling you.
It, it's not a typical generator that they're, they're needing.
I don't know. But, okay, the, the generator works, and we need these projects here.
That's the question. Thank you, not coming to talk to us about, or somebody, the board or somebody.
I don't think.
I mean, I'd like to take this until we figure out, I mean, I'm, I'm more than willing to spend seven hundred thousand dollars on getting water for people to come in, but I don't want to come back, it's like, and if I'm gonna have a generator.
Like, they need a grant for grants, yes, these are fine for grants for the generator, is he not?
So Mr. Hendricks wants to table, so we need to make.
No, I think, we, 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 and I think he's already in this, with the project, and then also the table, he sits down because, I mean, he, I mean, we always approved it one time, and he's coming for it, and I'm trying to take a spell back, and it's.
Well, they're just figuring the generator, that's all I'm saying, so, a little bit more with it.
So we're ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business, item G, whereas Cleveland County Commission is aware that the keep off system in the mountain center needs to be updated, whereas previous price quo of five thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars was accepted and replaced with a budget for this purpose, whereas an updated price quo of six thousand one hundred seventy-five has been retained, therefore be resolved by the Cleveland County Commission, which will increase in the amount of one thousand eight dollars to allow for the updated price quo.
My question.
Ms. Kyle, she's going to second. Any discussion?
Are we taking this out of the general fund, or is this coming out of everybody's budgetary cap, out of the budgetary cap?
Ready to vote? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission is aware of the continuous, this is I made, continuous buildup of litter on county's roadways, whereas the county's, you know, stated that inmates have been unable to help and litter the route, therefore be resolved Therefore be resolved that the Cleveland County Commission has tasked the county to be preparing specifications to obtain proposals for bids to remove the litter. Mr. Hendricks, Miss Scott, any discussion?
Now, this, you're just giving me, it's not actually as, as valid to do this.
Not committed, but just trying to figure out.
There's one thing, completely, it's not.
Mr. Owen, open your.
Oh, okay, agreed, brother.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, you, you're out, Mr. Scott. Moving to, uh. Uh, whereas the engineers are saying that purchase work for IBM Solutions for this year's spraying. Whereas the commission on call is asking for something on spraying oversight in our district. Therefore the Cleveland County Commission agrees to eliminate the spraying program for District One.
I agree.
One second.
Any discussion?
Aye. Is this this for one year? Is this one summer? Is this for one decade?
It says for this year's.
Just for this year, is what it says.
Now ready to vote? Okay. All in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
All in favor, saying no, I mean, those who are against, saying aye?
No.
And then he's happy. Moving down to J. Whereas that article I read this earlier, do, do, is there a name for this again, guys? For us to commit an ad hoc, established from an ad hoc performance appraisal committee?
We just need to sign it, too, you.
Yeah, we need to sign the two names, now therefore the commission establishes an ad hoc performance appraisal committee comprised of a commission, two commissioners to connect the said praises.
If you get a motion, the second, discuss it. My question.
We have a motion, second, Mr. Hendricks. Thank you, Captain, Jim. Discussion.
I, I would like to, uh, please, Mr. Scott, if you serve, would be, uh, approved together. You know, it's, it's a, a better.
You don't want?
Okay.
The tier you want to?
Okay.
Mr. Hill, you?
You don't want? This is a valid way, a valid way to say, a valid way to say.
I don't, I don't, I got it figured, too.
Okay, Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hill, Mr. Hendricks.
I think I've got it, I've got it.
Mr. Hill? Mr. Hendricks? And then, to state praises.
Okay.
Never mind.
Okay.
Almost saying, if, if the chairman should be on, on the, by.
The concern about having more than two members would be basically a lot more.
Round should do it, I, I have to go there.
Well, I, you know, um, and I, I don't mind doing my part, but you two, I'm content, and you two. And you, you say you have experience, and you strong, and listen to them, and. Alright, so, uh, with the motion being now therefore the commission establishes an ad hoc performance appraisal committee comprised of Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Hendricks to conduct said praises, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And you're aye too, Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Sorry, I can't even get that low voice. Now, moving back to.
Well, I'd like to add a resolution.
Add a resolution.
While we, uh. On which way we want to build on this before we go over this. And I ask, yes, for a quick resolution.
Um, I'm just gonna take a five minute break, and then we'll come back while he's doing it.
Yeah.
Um. When you get started, he's made, he thinks this, uh, can be amended. Amendment is?
I believe so, and I've got it written out here, but I can just tell you, you sound right.
Which one was it, D?
D.
D, where, where changed, we already amended it to convey the commission's desire.
And there's gonna be a slight change to that.
Okay, alright.
Basically, the first four whereas, and we'll say the second, because it communicates what the decision has to be. The fifth whereas will become, whereas the Cleveland County Commission, the commission, has determined that it would be appropriate to elect the standard allowance, period. That we, that's your decision. And then the last paragraph will be, the chairman of the commission is hereby authorized to convey the commission's decision to utilize the standard allowance, and then the rest of the paragraph will be the same. So when we strike and make a determination as to whether or not, and replace it with convey the commission's decision.
What was that, the length of standard allowance?
Standard allowance.
Allowance, which is our record, is right.
Well, that's what, that's what the decision is, up in the second whereas. You either elect the standard allowance, or you do the regular loss calculations. It's very similar to on your tax form, you either take the standard deduction, or you itemize. That's what they're asking you to do here, take the standard allowance, or itemize your loss. And the commission is likely to take the standard allowance.
Okay. So all, all whereas are the same, and when we get to five, whereas the Cleveland County Commission has determined that it would be appropriate to, uh, elect a standard allowance, period. Now therefore be resolved by the commission as follows, the chairman of the commission is hereby authorized to convey the commission's decision whether or not to utilize the standard allowance.
The commission's decision to utilize the standard allowance, take out whatever.
Aye. I'll read that again, the chairman of the commission is hereby authorized to convey the commission's decision to utilize the standard allowance for the purpose of calculating revenue loss for the county and several of the county's authorized supporting representative for ARPA funds to make corresponding legs in conjunction with the filing of county's ARPA projects and expenditure reports on or for April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And that is, is that your limit?
Yeah.
And you are, you started, this was your motion, this was your motion, are you good with that, Miss Scott? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now I think we have concluded all the business, uh.
Is that me?
Somebody is, yeah.
We're looking at stuff, we're looking at stuff, and I don't know.
Any other thoughts?
The only thing I've got is that Tracy Lambert is calling in and asked about that equipment on the first responder vehicle. Um, he has sent a letter stating that it is an approved item to IAC, of course, we'd have to get that personally. Do you want to pursue that, as well?
If we pursue, it needs to be that, uh, it would be on the approval of them, you know.
Well, they have to, they have to approve it, what we, what you guys said last time is that, that would be approved for them, and then make a decision on the information.
So it's a little bit.
So that, okay. Alright, I'll get the plan to get there, because they're gonna, they're gonna require the specifications of what he's requesting. So I'll get Tracy on that and send it to IAC.
Yes, sir. Uh.
The, uh, I guess might be opening the door to ever department or ever organization in the county to come asking for this offer money.
Well, that is gonna help, the whole county is a help.
Yeah, but it's, it's the hospital board, you know, if they can complete that, nothing's wrong.
Well. Yeah. They purchased all the, the equipment, I thought, or, you know, without, we may have to contribute to it, but we didn't, and they come in and contribute it, but not with all.
I just.
Let's, let's say what you like for it first, but then I want to know what you can, right?
Right now, we don't know that, until we, until we know the research from the IAC, until we hear something official from them, we do not know.
And I thought, we just gave him permission to purchase with, with his, he's got about a month.
Who's on?
He blew it through some, something, a grand or something.
No, he was asking, he was asking something.
What he, what we would have to do, even if his money has to be done, treated as a grant, correct? So even though he will have to apply to us with the specs and all this, uh.
He don't have it, no, please.
Yeah, so he'll just, he'll fill out like, whatever this form, we're gonna come up with.
But the hospital gets their tax money.
Say again?
I said, the hospital board gets their tax money, and in my opinion, that's pretty foolish, with some of that money, so.
Or in the past. In the past.
I don't think, yeah. Whatever, whatever reason wants to do, I mean, I vote.
It's not, it's not gonna deal with five clients, obviously.
I understand that, but I was like, you might be opening the door to some more of the.
Any other question?
That's fine, that's it.
Right away, that's on, on the litter pickup, I've got two options, and I didn't think I'd be voting, just thinking that one, but. So I started with major vectors, and just talking round numbers. Lawrence got about fifty, I mean, forty-eight miles worth of majors, Rogers got about thirty-eight, Terry's got about eighteen, and you make that in. So what I've done is I started with, I said, let's take fifty miles for each of the three districts, and then you've got ten miles worth of road in your, in your district. So what I, I asked him, one price pickup twice a year for a hundred sixty miles total. That'd be, he'd be, ten of yours, which is all over, and then give you here. So that's kind of the first price thing, the part, talking, just a little bit of discussion of what you take, the charges, that's gonna be one twenty-five things in for a twice pickup year. So a hundred sixty times one twenty-five, twice a year, that's gonna give us forty thousand dollars, is what that pickup's gonna cost. Option two that I asked was, if we just do a single pickup, he said that typically runs in a one seventy-five to one eighty range, for one pickup per year on a, on a mile a day. So if we do one pickup on the entire county, it would pick up every road, every paved road, and we've got about sixty thousand. Or we can pick up just a major once for twice a year for forty thousand. So that's kind of the two options I've got.
He said sixty or fifty?
Sixty thousand.
Pick up every road, forty on a major collector, twice a year.
So, so twice a year.
And the eighth of that.
No, that's, it would be, the forty thousand would be.
Twice a year.
And then the sixty thousand would get everything once a year, roundly. Uh, the twice a year is gonna be plenty, but everything once a year would get rid of a lot more.
Well, the bad thing, uh, that, I think, you probably won't be able to wash it here. I'm, what do you else think? I mean, I'm getting all the road tonight, I'm picking up, so I'm all thrilled.
But that's kind of the two options, that's the two options I've, I've kind of got on the table right now, so.
Okay.
And, you know, if we go twice a year, go the forty thousand range, pick those majors up twice a year, if you have a hotspot, or you have some other road that you want picked up, I know, you know, we added in there discretionary, whatever. You know, however, we want to add that to, you can always add to it, but that's just, I didn't start putting, well, we need this mile, this mile, this mile.
I know, I know Terry went today, I'm, we're all he got to pick up, I know he went ahead a couple of spots today, so, uh, you know, minor collectors right now, might be that he can pick some of those up as, as things start coming back to normal, it might be that he can have, go out with four, five people, and go out and knock out a lot of pickup, you know. But right now, we only got one inmate, possibly two, I think we might possibly have two next week if he, if he gets his other shot, so. Now, the line, I also, I thought we're sort of open, whether you have a shot or not, but I guess they're still open, I'm to the jack, so, you know.
And, and according to line, a lot of it's volume, too, they just, they don't have.
Well, they're not arresting.
That, right, they don't have the number inmates that are paying. So that's what we're going to do there, I just wonder, if you got a better idea, I'll take it, Miss Scott.
You got time, you got that out there.
You, you don't have the money to do it, don't they?
No, it's, I mean, it's always coming out of general fund, because Terry, Terry's picked it up, it's always been a general fund, not.
Would that be something we'd want to look at for the upcoming budget, I'm right, we could do this, but, Tom, what's?
I think, I think that's.
We're, we're funding Mr. Benfield, and he's retired, so we might take that money and fund this.
Is he, is he, is he, meaning?
Uh, we haven't, we haven't had that many inmates, so he's only worked, I mean.
I see, no.
There's really not a lot of money we've spent on Mr. Penney this year.
Yeah.
I just wondered if he.
Well, they don't have, on some of the projects that we worked on, are from when we got stuck, we're going on, we just got to put the new rig on a little building at the jail, you know, our little stores building, one out of here, then he come up and helped us on, uh, at the courthouse a couple of days. He really has it, you know, because we haven't had access, so this week, this past week, we've had access to inmates, so. Uh, and if we get this out, that would be two, if you take two, he can pick up a good, you know, he pushes it down, you know, he can pick up a lot of trade. And, and a lot of times with Mr. Penney on, on our projects that we work on, we utilize it on those, plus he usually paid the kids' roads to pick up, too, but. Which, I think, I think we do need to address it in the next phase on what we are gonna do.
I mean, we got, we got this, uh, money on the pay coming out, and before we spend forty or fifty thousand dollars, we might need to, what, we got some figures for the new budget to see what we're at, which.
And I almost said, too, it may just feel one time thing, just to get, just to get it out before you do, and then.
Well, what about the other one time pickup down in Hawaii, like you just said, and then, uh, Terry, thanks, I think, just do one whole county live pickup, and then let's, let's see what, add it, add it into the summer, see what the budget's gonna do, usually the summer brings out crime, or perhaps more in jail, a couple of things.
So what, what did you say, one?
Alright.
Best, just, in conversation, that one pickup, one pickup for everything's gonna be about sixty thousand, if, well, it was a number she was throwing out, Steve, so.
We might as well look at the dorms till it's all, with. Come on, do you?
Let's see how it goes with, uh, I, I just said there, uh, I think, I, I wish, have you got the hot roads that you, have you seen with Terry? Hot road, hot pickup right now?
Not to Terry, not since.
Well, give them a major.
Okay.
Field constitution is hard to read, of course.
Is that a major, right?
Nice to start.
But it's.
Trey, I didn't want to do this.
Well, I, I already have it, uh. Well, send me some roads from those days that, uh, we don't, Terry's heading into the wreck, and today.
He's got a color, and I, I mean, he's got a list that I've already gave him, and I'll tell you for the next four or five years.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Alright, anything else?
All there.
I don't remember, no. There is no business, uh, no business, you guys, you guys need discussion, aye?
Yeah. Uh, I spoke last week, but I was trying to get out of fire to calm our fire wheels and all, and they shot all that, and they're not on it. They don't even know what paid, that was get the line in there, took a minute, so. So Lee and I have been talking, maybe just put the generator up there for now, if that's something we can do next month, or whatever. Uh, they can give you a reason why. They said that the usage is not high enough for seniors to, never spend that kind of.
How far has it took the nearest company?
You're not, you're not researched that, or something, you're able to have.
Why don't you just buy, why don't you just get one underground table, and then later down the other.
Because of how such a boat just dropped, they'd have to, we'd have to put a transformer somewhere in the middle of it.
Because we have such a voltage drop, they'd have to, we'd have to put a transformer somewhere in the middle of it.
Thirteen hundred?
I, I asked about doing that, we, I actually talked to the engineer today about doing that, and, uh. They won't allow, they, they still have to install it, they won't allow us to do it themselves, that's what I asked, also, was what if we put in, come and do it for a while, we all have connections on neither end. And the answer I got was, no, we'll have to do all that, and.
Well, put the meter on the upper end. Do we own money on it to the upper end, or would you put the other?
It's still, the voltage drop's still.
Are they not powered somewhere, or are they dead out? It's, uh.
It's, it's subtle timing, I figure.
Well, I'm actually looking into doing that.
Well, because what they're, the fire they're using is probably just a little cheap generator, but they don't run anyway.
What I was saying about doing, it's, since, I mean, it ain't, I guess, known just yet, because they still working on some pricing, so if I do it. It ain't that they won't run it out, they're just saying they'll do it free.
Right. What's the part around the night? I thought the first twenty thirty foot, they, they furnished right?
They got, they got set, what, four poles?
They set the four poles, and they cleared four miles of roadway.
Transformer.
Transformers and. I, the fault I got is about, you were, the, the, the roadway bunch is still getting their number in, but we're looking at twenty-five to thirty thousand, get higher on that.
I think we're the generator.
And so what I was gonna do is give it a thirty thousand watt fuel generator that run off propane, stick it in a little tube, get the propane tank out there, so they can hollow the fuel, and then crank it and get them and turn it off and leave.
And then they're gonna get back.
And it'll, hopefully, be there when I'm back.
Have to build a concrete bunker, too.
Well, would they, they're gonna keep the water on the hills?
Oh.
I always bet that's a balance camera sign, I bet you've watched the papers.
I need to keep bringing up the water seeds, but when the legislature's especially troubled with, I think I need to drag the A C C A into that and, and start really pursuing that.
I agree, because it needs to be, it needs to be done statewide, I mean, A C C A is gonna be critical to making that. Oh, really, that's, the state of Atlanta. Well, yeah, whatever action we take is gonna impact other counties, and we don't need to, you know, stick our neck out and get chopped off when some other county's doing something different, it needs to be a unified plan.
And you got something like, God, the county said, oh, we got three water cities, we got fifteen?
And Randolph's got one.
The, I know, the A C C A's got their plate pool with the water slater, but soon as the water slater, over.
That's true, not the.
Random into the, it's not done.
It's one of Tyler's, but the house.
Did they ask, did they ask, was he? Alright, now I'll let you tell the questions.
I'm making my turn.
I'm watching, you have a second?
I'm sorry.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.